Okay, I believe it's six o'clock, so we'll call this council meeting to order, August the 2nd, 2018. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Goodman?
May we bow. Father, we thank you for this evening, we thank you for the rain that we have, and for all the many blessings you give us each day. We ask that you be with us tonight as we decide some very important factors for our citizens, and we just ask that you go on throughout our lives, making us grateful for everything we have. All these things we pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Goodman does a good job with the invocation. Next month, however, we are going to have Bishop Charles Gehring, a local individual here, has agreed to come and give the invocation for our meeting. Okay, under public service announcements, Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. I'm not going to be reading the public service announcements anymore. They're printed, they're on the back table over here, so please pick up a copy when you leave, and that way we'll save some time at our meeting.
Thank you. You find out all the events and everything that's going on in the city, so feel free to pick up one of those as you leave, or if you didn't get one as you came in. All right, guest investors, Chief Mitchell, we'll have some comments and some recognition, and then there'll be a short video.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If I can have Officer Michael Molassa step forward. Every quarter during the year, we have an employee of the quarter, and our command staff and supervision for the months of June, excuse me, April, May, and June of this year, the employee of the quarter, I'm sorry, in July, the employee of the quarter is Officer Michael Molassa. He's been in law enforcement for approximately 15 years, has a wealth of knowledge that he brings to our Uniform Patrol Division. During those months, it was just, he really, in particular, stood out because of his, he not only worked his shift, but he also was there for other special details, and not once did we ever have to ask him to do those. He was one of the first ones that always stepped forward and wanted to be involved in several of our operations and our community events. And like I said, he just stood out. Normally, we give a plaque, which we had some little technical difficulties with that, but he will receive that here very soon, but just wanted to, I think it's important for the citizens to see the hard work of our men and women at the Police Department, and just we want to recognize him tonight as the employee of the quarter, so thank you for your work, sir. While I'm up, I had our monthly UCR, Uniform Crime Report, through the statistics that go to the Federal Bureau of Investigations each month, and they have a report for June, and then another report, our crime report for the month, the monthly report for July, and I'll quickly go through those, not to take up too much time. But our 2017-2018 comparison, you should have the report before you, as you can see, for the month of July, are in our Part 1 crimes, you see that year-to-month and year-to-date, the percentages of our year-to-month compared to last year, again, I have to speak to the hard work for men and women, that most of the categories, our property crimes are down, our total Part 1 crimes, which includes everything for the month and for the year, as you can see, is down just over 5% for the month, and for the year, as compared to last year, just over 6%. And you see the other numbers going down at the bottom of the column, as far as our traffic citations, our warnings, and then our total traffic contacts, you can see at the bottom for the month and for the year, but if anyone had any questions in regards to our Uniform Crime Report or monthly update. Also, just a real quick, and I just laid those on your desk before the meeting began, is our report for June, excuse me, our report for July, our calls for service, just over 1,800, you see the arrests there, 102 citations, and then total traffic contacts, citation contacts were 430. Again, as it is every month, our areas of concern, criminal activity, we're shoplifting, followed by theft by taking, and then it has the report on our accidents. We have had some meetings with some of our local businesses in order to mitigate our shoplifting activity, to reduce that, and that's going very well with some things and some practices that the businesses can put in place to minimize that call activity, that our officers and the amount of time and the hours it takes to deal with those, plus making sure that establishment is protected against the theft crimes. Accidents, as you can see for the month of July, were 77, and that's down, I believe is down from last month, and then there's some selective traffic enforcement strategies that we will be putting in place again this month. Upcoming community events, our Coffee with a Cop that we do every month for several years, coming on three years now, and then we're going to do a bus stop with a cop event because of this being the first month the school started, and then there's some high, there's some case profile updates that you see there as well. You want to have any question on July's activity? Ms. Stewart, thanks, Mr. Peppers, for this last second with our, probably about two months ago, you approved for us to be able to purchase and use your company to produce a recruitment video and a promotional video. Our recruitment video is complete, it's two hours and 35 minutes, so it's going to take up that amount of time, and Ms. Stewart, if you can play that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
When you come to Canton Police Department, you're going to have a chance to succeed and be someone that's a leader in the community, someone that the community trusts and admires.
From the chief on down, we have a community-oriented police department?
When you put on this uniform, it means something. You definitely have purpose when you come to work.
The community is so involved here.
It's a great place to be because we have the community support.
And the officers care about their community.
You get to meet someone new every single day, and it's just a passion of mine to get out there and be around people.
We're a family. We hold each other accountable.
We want those that want to serve in this profession to come here to be their law enforcement home, not just for a short amount of time, but for a long term.
We have a lot of seasoned officers that teach you things.
Just an everyday check-in or weekly check-in, stuff like that feels great.
And that helps recruit and retain those that are here, because they see that they're going to be able to be a success in this department, whether you've been here 20 years or whether you've been here for two days.
There's people getting promoted, I'm so proud of them, and one day I know I'm going to get there as well.
We always brag about our gear.
Probably some of the finest equipment in the state of Georgia.
Giving our older officers and our new officers the equipment they need to be a success.
Bring the weapon out.
Drop the weapon, please.
Drop the weapon, drop the weapon.
When you come up to the target, your finger.
Ongoing training is extremely important to this department, and someone that comes here is going to get that.
You're not just a person with a badge and a gun.
Someone actually cares about my progress.
If you come and work for the Canton Police Department family, you're going to have a successful career.
I'm blessed to be working here.
We are a family, and that's what you'll get with the Canton Police Department.
Really looked good. Thanks. Okay, now we're going to have a presentation of recommended capital improvement programs, projects for our water and sewer system.
That's a tough act to follow. As you know, Black and Beach has been doing our Water and Sewer Master Plan for some time now. We're wrapping up the water portion of it, and one of the tasks of that was to develop a capital improvements project list, and what they're going to do tonight is give you an overview of some of the immediate needs that we, that come out of the plan, based on the projection, flow projections, population projections, service area, and whatnot. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve Simpson with Black and Beach, and he'll kind of run through that for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Steve Simpson, I am with Black and Beach. I'm joined here tonight by Nicole. We've both been with you several times before as we have worked through the master plan. Nicole has been our Water Master Plan Lead on this effort, and it's certainly been a pleasure working with your staff to develop this. As Dave mentioned, the capital improvements program is really the outcome from the planning effort, which consisted, starting from reviewing the system and working through things like looking at projections, future growth, and capacity needs to develop this, and so I want to go through that briefly here. One of the first things to note, just to step back, the existing water system does cover quite an area, and as you know, it does not match up exactly with the city boundaries, but we discussed that in some detail, as you might remember, what areas are intended to be served, who your wholesale customers are, and where you get water from as well. So all those things were taken into account as we worked through the planning effort. The water system consists of a number of elements, it certainly consists of the raw water supply, your water treatment plant, system storage, booster pump stations, and then the distribution system. So you have quite an investment in the assets of your water distribution system and your water treatment system moving forward. I'm going to step through the recommended improvements. As we worked through the planning effort, we did identify improvements in each of those areas, and I want to step through briefly the different major projects involved, starting with water supply, and then moving through pump stations and storage tanks, and then we'll talk a little bit about distribution system improvements as well. As we worked through the master planning effort, we identified projects throughout the system, so as part of our effort, we developed a map to illustrate where all of the, where all of those improvements are. They affect all of your pressure zones in terms of storage tanks and other facilities, and we'll go through that. Dave mentioned that there are short-term needs, we won't spend a lot of time on projections, but as you know, the city is growing and the demand for water is increasing, and so that was taken into account as we went through the planning and modeling effort to make sure that your facilities are sized to serve the community's needs well into the future. Your existing water treatment plant has served you well, been in place for a number of years, you've gotten great service out of it, and you produce good quality water for your citizens. However, that treatment plant does not have the capacity into the future to serve your needs, and so one of the projects recommended in the capital improvements program is a new water treatment plant. We have looked at phasing that, recommended two phases, so that you're not building capacity that in the future may be, may not be needed as soon as projected, so that's the reason for the phasing, but you are going to need a new water treatment plant, and although the site has yet to be determined, that treatment plant is expected to use your, the city's interest in Hickory Log Creek Reservoir. Moving on to storage and pump station improvements, one of the areas that is growing and needs to be strengthened in terms of the distribution system is the area in the west part of the system around Laurel Canyon. And so one of the recommendations is a new tank for your highest pressure zone, the 1,442 zone, and to feed that tank, you're going to need a booster pump station associated with that. We've got a map that shows sort of that western area and where that tank might be. All the details are not worked out, but this is approximately what the configuration of those needed system assets would be. In the middle of the system, you have an existing site that has a tank on it, that was viewed as a great site to add additional storage for your 1,184 zone with a new elevated tank, and also use as a site for a pump station to help serve the 1,292 zone. So those two facilities we're envisioning being co-located on the same site, and actually serving both pressure zones from that site, with the tank serving the 1,184, and then the pump station providing the pumping capacity to move flow to the high or the increased capacity needs in that 1,292 zone, so toward the east part of Canton. And finally, Ridge Pine, you have an existing elevated tank, and in the CIP, the recommendation is to replace that with a larger tank, both from a capacity increase reason as well as a condition of replacement. So the project components would include that new, larger, elevated tank, and it would be approximately the same height as the existing tank, but would be larger capacity, and could be located near the existing site. So we've stepped through most of the facilities-related recommendations in the master plan and in the capital improvements program. I did want to highlight, there are a number of waterline improvements that are included in the recommendations that came out of the water model that was developed, and there are a number of them, I thought I'd highlight just a few. There's a section of pipe recommended along Waleska Road that helps increase the reliability and capacity throughout the main zone of the system. The new 16-inch along Coming Highway across 575, that's really to help increase the strength of connection to the 1,292 zone, so over-serving needs in the eastern part of the system. And then associated with the new water treatment plant, obviously, you need a way to get the water produced at that new treatment plant into the distribution system. So those are a few examples of the major pipeline improvement recommendations. So in looking at a sort of summary of those short-term needs, we also put together a list here to kind of show in tabular form what some of those recommendations are and how they stack up. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or...
What is the capacity of the Ridge Pine tank now?
It's 200,000 gallons.
And looking at half a million?
Half a million, right. Yep.
Okay. Mr. Grant?
On the waste treatment, water treatment expansion, you recommend two phases, one to 6 million gallons per day. I know we sent out a RFP for 8 million, and they sort of came back and said we only need 6 million, so the question on that phase two for 10 million, what would be the time for that phase two, and then what? Explain the discrepancies between what our decision was there and...
Yeah. Well, so as a typical generality, you will, a lot of systems provide more water than they get returned in the form of wastewater, because some of the water that you produce is used for irrigation. So the fact that one is not exactly the same as your wastewater, you know, the water plant recommendation is not exactly the same as wastewater is not unusual. So we did look at, using the example of the wastewater treatment plant, knowing that, you know, there is a desire to right-size the capacity of your plants. You don't want to invest too much now because the accuracy of our projections may not be... You want to go back to that?
Yeah.
So what we typically recommend is that you size for what you think are short-term needs, and so in the graphic here, what we're showing is that the capacity of your existing plant could be exceeded as early as 2022, 2023, in that timeframe. So you need new capacity now. Now, we're looking at sizing for a planning horizon about to 2040, and as you know, our projections get less certain the farther out that we look. So many utilities choose to stage their plant construction so that they're not investing for the full plant capacity at the beginning of the term. Does that make sense?
I just wondered, is this, is that coincide with the design?
So the 10 MGD would carry you, according to the projections, would carry you out past 2040, if that helps. So the 6 MGD is needed between 2020 and 2025, and the 10 MGD should carry you out to past 2040. One of the things that, one of the things that we'd probably look at in the initial planning development would be maybe, instead of going to 6, possibly going to 8 in this first phase, and that would, 8 would take you to, what, 2035? But that would, we'd look at that in the initial, you know, design development of the plant. It's still somewhat a moving target, but it's something we would consider.
And additionally, you wouldn't want to build for 10 million gallons a day now and not utilize the full capacity or close capacity of the plant, because then you could have issues with equipment and design, and you're going to have to replace some of those things over time, and so you really just want to build for what you have to have, you know, from an average daily use, as opposed to building for the maximum future growth.
Right, and if you look at it, you know, if you build for 6, and the projections are as they show, you know, when you finish that, you're looking to go again and expand again, so that's why we'd look at possibly going to either 8 initially, but at the same time, you're looking at, during that planning phase, you can see how development's going, and it may either go higher or lower than what you project, and so it's still kind of a work in progress.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
Okay, so it's looking from this chart, like we will hit our current capacity in three, four years, something like that. How, what's a ballpark if we started, when do we have to start to have something ready to go online by then?
Now.
Now?
Soon, yes.
So it would take that long to get a project to production?
Yeah. You know, you need to start with land acquisition, so there are things to work out. Design might take 12 months, construction might take two years, just to give you an idea, and you're certainly at the point, you know, you have a permit from Georgia EPD, and sort of their recommendation, good planning, is when you're at about 80% of your current capacity, you need to be thinking about, and that's where you guys are right now, so...
The other thing to look at is those projections are max month numbers, you see below is our annual average, so we're considerably below that, but you still have to be able to meet that maximum month demand, so, or max day?
Day.
Max day, I'm sorry.
The other thing to remember, too, is that unlike with sewer, we do have some opportunities for interconnection in the interim with the county, if, water authority, if, you know, on timing. Sewer's a little bit different issue, because, you know, we don't have the same connections there, so that's why we started on the wastewater plant project first, as it's more necessary.
Have y'all identified optimum sites for placing the water plant?
We have a site in mind, yeah.
Okay.
Along Bluffs Parkway, along the interconnecting pipe from the reservoir down to the river, we'd probably tap that line as our water source. And the other thing that does is now you're using the reservoir as your water source as opposed to the Etowah, and you're not, we experience upsets in the river during rain events and things like that, we wouldn't be dealing with that, so we'd have a more reliable source as well.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item five, consideration to approve the agenda. I'd like to amend agenda up front here. We need to add a discussion and possible approval of a right-of-way deed and authorize the mayor to sign. This is the one that I believe is up at a result of the reservoir. It's a settlement with some of the property that's been going on for, gosh, forever, you know. So apparently we have a settlement on that now, and we will deed a little bit of property back to them. We will add that under new business. Let's see, we'll make that at the very end, after J, make that K. And we also need to, we want to remove item 11E and F, which is Sanaya Petro, which is the gas station at Butterworth and State Route 20 at their request, we pull that off. Now, was there a timeframe on that, Mr. Peppers?
It'll go on to the September cycle.
September. Okay, okay. Ms. Wilson, do you have some?
Nick's going first, and then I'll...
Oh, okay.
I'd like to add, under Council introduced items, a discussion about an entertainment And then if we, depending on how well Mr. Peppers covers the project's discussion, I'd like to make sure to just address that, whether it be in his section or, oh, I'm sorry, depending on...
Depending on how Mr. Peppers covers the projects list, we've talked about capital projects, whether we discuss that during his time or this time, whatever's deemed appropriate. So I want to make sure that we kind of get a good plan of action for that, for all of us.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
I would like to add, under council introduced items, a discussion about storage lockers.
About what?
Pardon?
What'd you say, about?
I would like to add, under council introduced items...
Yes.
...a discussion of storage lockers for weapons and other personal items...
Okay.
...at the New City Hall.
Is that any kind of lockers?
Pardon?
Any kind of lockers?
Right, for weapons and for personal items.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and hope we'll be able to keep up with all that.
Mr. Grant made the motion.
Mr. Yon seconded the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay. You have in your agenda package the minutes from our public hearing July 19th. Our public hearing on July 19th, attachment six A and six B, council meeting draft minutes from July the 19th as well. So we had two public hearings, and one, I think, was at 11:00, and one was at 6:00 PM. And those minutes and the draft minutes for the July 19th council meeting, are there any corrections or changes to be made to those? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented. Mr. Goodwin made the motion. Mr. Yon seconded the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. You have also in your agenda package the financials for June. If there's any questions, our chief financial officer is here. Do you have any questions or comments? These are for informational purposes only and don't need any votes. So if there are none, we'll move along. A 10-minute public input period. Okay, first, Mr. Weaver.
Good afternoon, members of council. Mr. Mayor, my name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at 131 Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. Earlier in the week, I had the distinct privilege to be able to speak with your city clerk in regards to the fireworks matter. You may recall, back in the June cycle of council business, along with the brunch referendum matter, which I believe council has since acted on. The fireworks matter came up based on a legislative enactment from the General Assembly, and in my conversation with her, it was made known to me that city staff are still working on, looking at that. There's still a draft ordinance measure that's still being prepared by the city's legal team. And in light of that, I just hope that council will keep that on the back burner, and that will be addressed at some point in the future, I do believe, was of importance to some members of council. And also, if I do recall correctly, I was going to speak about the handgun storage locker issue, but I will wait to hear what council has to say, and I'll address that at some other point in time. But nevertheless, I'm very, very appreciative of council's willingness to listen. And thank you again, also, for continuing to look out to issues that I believe that are important, not only to myself, but to the citizens of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, if I may, I almost forgot. Mr. Mayor, may I make one more remark? This past cycle of the school district's business, I do believe it's reflected on their summary minutes for June, July 19th? Yes, July 19th, and I was there. They actually listed a surplusage, the old LR Tippins Elementary School Building, that's at the top of Canton Cotton Mill Number Two Community, at the top of the hill there. If they do sell that property, I will be approaching the board again to confirm it. But if they do that, I'll have to come back to city council and ask that you amend the school safety zone map on that matter, too, if they're able to secure a buyer for that, and that property is no longer school property. But I'll work with the school district in collaboration with them to see what comes of that effort in regards to selling that surplusage property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Flynn.
Good afternoon, and evening now. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I am here to speak on agenda item 10A. And so I don't know if you'd prefer that I go ahead and offer you my remarks now, or hold that. I'd be happy to yield my spot in the public input session, as long as I would know that I would have some time when you take up that item on your agenda. I know it's coming up relatively quickly, anyway.
I think you, if you go ahead and speak now, and then if there are, I believe Ken Patton will present that item on our agenda, and when he does, if he, if there are questions or comments from the council that need to be addressed, we can get that input from you at that time.
That's, that sounds like an efficient way of going about it. The reason I'm here tonight is in representation of one of your members. Mr. Grant asked me to offer some remarks. I think that he is somewhat uncomfortable, given the fact that he is a neighbor to the proposed project and the proposed encroachment. And I think that he also feels like it would be somewhat unfair to the applicant if he were to offer these comments, as opposed to someone advocating on his behalf. And so that's why I'm here, and I'm here to speak on the driveway permit application that I think has been re-termed on this agenda as a proposed encroachment agreement. My comments will basically fall into sort of what I consider to be two categories, two aspects. One will be sort of the technical aspects of what it is that has been proposed, and then the other will be more along the lines of the issue of appropriateness. What I would note, and you'll see when the agenda item comes up, and you've also got it in your agenda package, is the plan that has been presented by the applicant. I have a small-sized version of it here. I know you have probably a small-sized version in your packet, and I suspect we will all see in a few moments a larger-sized version. I would note to you that, in my estimation, this plan leaves a lot to be desired. One of the most important things that we lawyers and folks in the engineering world deal with when we deal with roadway improvements or roadway encroachments is cross-sections, because not only is it important to see what a project is going to look like from the sky in a 2D representation, but it's also important to see from a side view what's going to happen. And that's something I think that's very important as far as this proposed plan is concerned, and it has omitted. If you consider this plan in conjunction with the land disturbance permit that has also been presented by the applicant, what we'll see is that there is a relatively massive amount of soil to be cut, not only from the property owner's lot, but also from the city's right-of-way. Cut, we, from the sketchiness of this plan appears to be anywhere from about four to about seven feet. And what that's going to do is that's going to obviously cause a substantial change in the city's property, the city's right-of-way. That's what we're talking about here, is your Brit Street right-of-way. And in so doing, what you will be doing is you will affect the drainage, you will affect the utilities, you will affect all of those aspects of the city's right-of-way for the benefit of everyone who lives on that street. I would note, and I think that maybe, Mr. Mayor, you even commented last week about whether or not the city has published standards for how its rights-of-way would be encroached, or how driveways are to be permitted. And the city, from what I can tell, has no such standards, but that doesn't mean the standards don't exist. The DOT, as you might imagine, has a whole book on how it is that driveways should be handled when they are going to encroach upon a public right-of-way. One of the giant discrepancies that I would point out between the proposed plan and the proposed encroachment agreement is that we see this doesn't come anywhere close to what the state would expect in a similar circumstance. There's no performance bonds, there's no utilities protection, there's no protection of vegetation, there's, generally speaking, the DOT doesn't allow citizens to create circular driveways on the DOT's own right-of-way. And if you are going to have two driveway penetrations, the standard is they have to be separated by at least 125 feet. What we have in this situation is a property owner who basically wants to use the city's right-of-way to have a nice circular driveway. I get it, I think it looks, sounds great, but it's not their property. And so that's, to me, I think, one of the largest problems that we have with the proposed plan. Second of all, what we see in the proposed plan, if you look at the north side, will notice that there is reference to an "abandoned alley." Now, that alley is also city right-of-way. I brought with me today copies of the starting plat, the city's right-of-way not only extends on Brit Street, but there is a series of alleys that goes all the way down Main Street in the old Crestview subdivision. I have handout copies of these plats, if you'd like, don't know how to get them to you, but in your old meeting room, it was a good bit easier. I've done the title work. I can't figure out how or why it is that anyone would have considered the city's right-of-way at the rear of this property to have been abandoned. There is a very specific legal procedure that is required for government to abandon a public right-of-way, and that hasn't happened here. There's nothing in the chain of title, and nothing that I can find in the city's records that would indicate there has been an abandonment. Why is that important? Well, it's important because under this plan, using the setbacks that are required by your own ordinances, all of those setbacks will be thrown off. The placement of the buildings, the placement of the improvements to exist on this plat will all be thrown off as a consequence of the fact that he doesn't own, this property owner does not own, what they claim to own at the rear of the property. I think that's an extremely important aspect for you to take into consideration. What I've provided to you are three different plats, the plat that created this lot and all of the adjacent lots, plat upon which it appears that this claim is made, that this alley is owned by the property owner, and then the intervening plat, which also shows that it is not an abandoned right-of-way. The reality is thus, if the plan is wrong, we can't act on it accurately in order to be able to gauge what the effect on the public's property will be. Lastly, I would point out, from a technical standpoint, the proposed encroachment agreement doesn't really accommodate for the protection of any of the city's infrastructure in this location. Its drainage, its utilities, its landscaping on this particular piece of property. The only thing that's addressed is the landscaping that is proposed to be installed by the applicant. There's no inspection protocol, there's no bonding requirement, there's nothing that would otherwise protect the city's assets in this right-of-way. I really, however, think that the biggest issue here is the appropriateness of what's been proposed. What we have, in reality, as a property owner in Canton, that if you look at the plan, wants to consume approximately half of the city's right-of-way, extending driveways and, more importantly, extending their yard into the city's right-of-way. Basically, we've got the conversion of what the city has owned from, I think it's 1914 is when this is created, the appropriation of this, this half of this right-of-way area for someone's yard and a grand circular driveway. And what I would submit is that that is an inappropriate allocation, an inappropriate use of the city's assets, the city's right-of-way there. The reality is, if this, if you were to grant what has been proposed and establish a precedent like that, I've probably got a long line of clients that would love to encroach on the city's right-of-way to extend their yards. Heck, I, as you probably all know, I own some buildings in downtown Canton, and I'm thinking about how I can build out into the sidewall, once we establish a precedent that it's okay to do this. And so what I would submit to the council, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you've got, either now or when this agenda item comes up, I would submit to council that while no one is opposed to the improvement of a driveway, the conversion of the city's right-of-way for these purposes is inappropriate.
Okay. Questions would come during the discussion of the item on the agenda.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Which is not that far away, by the way. Okay, under old business discussion and possible action on Perry Phillips' proposal for Brit Street encroachment. Mr. Patton.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. This item has been before city council previously, was tabled. Mr. Phillips did submit drawings that reflect...
Ken, can you hold up just a minute? Actually, I left someone off, Ms. Brown or Mr. Brown?
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just skipped you on the end here. Come on down for the public input period. I apologize. I just happened to notice there's another name on there.
I appreciate that. I just figured we went over our 10 minutes. I'd just like to put a little input in on 11D for, I am the neighbor to this property. That is, they're wanting to build on the foundation that is already put in incorrectly.
Okay, that's also an agenda item, isn't it?
Yes.
11D, that's the Meritage request for...
What's that?
That's the request from Meritage for council to approve hearing and appeal from them on...
Okay, then you need to wait till we get to that item.
Okay.
You'd signed up on public input, but actually, we need to wait, and if there are questions, we can get questions to you at that time and any comment.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, Ken, let's go back to that one now. Thank you. We'll get there.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. This matter has been on city council agenda previously. Mr. Phillips did provide documents that provided the information the city had requested be included in the drawings and the proposal relative to encroachment and the driveway. I believe the attorney's office prepared the encroachment agreement. Development Services looked at this, they didn't see an issue or problem with the second driveway. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Estes.
I guess more, mine would be more of a statement. Hearing, hearing Mr. Flynn's comments that are really kind of helping solidify... No? Because I'm not on. Sorry. So my comments would be more of a statement, I guess, just listening to Mr. Flynn's comments. I had a lot of questions, and really, I think this helped to kind of solidify my position here. You know, my big concern would be just really the precedence, for one, that this could set. And then I guess the other piece would be, I've been, I've been on that road many times through the, and I'm just very concerned about the current condition of it, as well as, again, as Mr. Flynn talked about, just the overall land disturbance there. So my, my position, I'd throw out now a motion to deny.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Do you have, Ms. Wilson, you have something?
What is the purpose of a right-of-way?
Well, the purpose of the right-of-way is to provide access to adjacent properties and homes and businesses.
Right.
Provide a place for utilities, access on to existing...
Right. There's a reason for a right-of-way. And normally, the right-of-way is used, or just like you said, for any, any kind of utilities or whatever. The city or the established authority uses the right-of-way for an established purpose. So I don't understand how we could relinquish part of a right-of-way.
Well, we do it all the time, actually.
And it's not relinquishing the right-of-way, it's an encroachment agreement to allow some grading work to be done within the existing right-of-way.
But it would be a, but it would be a permanent thing. It would not be just construction... It would not be just construction and then they would leave and the right of way would be back like it was to start with, correct?
That is correct. The existing right of way along the frontage of Mr. Phillips contains what I would call a thicket of bamboo.
So-
And it slopes up to the front of the house.
I guess I'm not making my point too clearly, but it seems that there is a reason for a right of way. And if we are encroaching on it, relinquishing it, then why would we have a right of way?
The agreement doesn't, if the city needed the right of way, the agreement allows the city to go in and with notice, do whatever the city needs to. So it is not permanent in that sense.
Right. I read it. And it said that if the city needed to go into where the homeowner had built and landscaped and done things, the city could go in and they could tear it all up and they are not required to put it back.
That's correct.
So that's the issue, I think.
Well, that's not permanent. If the city can go in and bulldoze over what the owner's putting in there and pave it, because there's no paving there now. It's got bamboo on it now. Is that right? Is that in the right of way or not?
There is Britt Street paving, which is approximately 18 feet wide. Some places, it's even 16 feet if I'm not mistaken and all. But the area that is proposed for the encroachment is outside of the asphalt paving of the street itself.
I think one thing, council does what it wants on this, but just keep it, I think we all get confused about this a little bit. In every subdivision in the city, people have landscaping in the right of way. Because 10 feet generally of everybody's yard is either grass, shrubs. There are people encroaching everywhere. And we do it by approving subdivision plaits. So people's yards are actually right of way. So it's not unheard of that this- We allow it to happen all the time. We don't have any standards for when that happens, but it happens in every subdivision, just by course. They put a curb in. Well, or we assume there's permission. I don't know. I mean, there's 50-foot right of way and 20 feet of pavement. So there's some feet outside of the pavement that's actually right of way. So the-
Thanks. That helps out, sir.
Do you recall, Ken, a recent right of way encroachment agreement that we had with the homeowners at Town Mill? Is that not correct?
No, sir.
Summer Walk.
The agreement, encroachment agreement was at Summer Walk, up on the Heard Road entrance side. And if I might add, Mr. Mayor, council members, as development occurs, construction takes place, streets are put in right of way. Home builders and residential developments build the homes, do all their landscaping. They put sidewalks in within the existing rights of way. City doesn't accept the rights of way for maintenance until after a maintenance performance bond period. Majority of the subdivisions, well, beyond my 10 years with the city of Canton, the developers, home builders have sodded within what was proposed as a right of way and accepted after that maintenance bond period time with those improvements that have been made. Majority of the homeowners or landscape firms automatically mow all of that, even the grass beauty strips between the back of the curb and the edge of the sidewalk.
Do you recall any other cases where maybe driveways have been put in that were not permitted or?
There was a driveway that was cut in out at Governor's Walk subdivision. And I believe it was, God, is it Governor's Walk, the name of the main street. A gentleman cut a driveway in for a detached accessory building on his property.
And I believe that was a third cut on that single lot there. Because they had a circular driveway and then this additional cut.
That I'm not 100% certain of, Mr. Mayor, but I do know that there was an existing driveway for the home. It could have been a circular driveway, but there was an additional driveway that was cut in on that same property to a detached accessory structure.
I believe Mr. Flynn indicated that there really were no standards that would necessarily prevent a driveway from being cut in at this point. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir. I have proposed some specific driveway regulations. Hopefully, we'll get to address that here before too long.
So the staff, did the staff get everything that they needed to make a decision? You know, actually, quite honestly, I've been confused about how it ever got before the council to begin with. I'm not really sure. But does the staff have everything that they need to make a decision regarding this?
Yes.
Okay. Who else? Mr. Goodwin.
That was my question, and I asked it last time, is, you know, did we have all the information? Our staff have all the information they needed to do that. You weren't here available. But I would really like to see this go back to the Planning, Zoning, Building Department and let them be the person that makes this decision. Because I think, number one, we've been setting a precedent. Number two, it's not what we typically do, yes, what you typically do or your staff typically does. And there are lots of different things involved in this. The least of which is a neighbor that's on this council. So that's kind of what I was going to make a motion to. I know there's a motion on the floor. But my thoughts were that this is kind of a convoluted situation here.
Mr. Grant.
Yes. Obviously, I'll be abstaining from any vote if it takes place. But a couple of points I want to make. Number one, I know that landscaping happens on our right of ways all the times and people plant shrubs there. And when we build new subdivisions, obviously, right of ways are considered. But this case is different, very different for a couple of different reasons. Number one, you know, the street, Britt Street, is very substandard in the fact that it's, you know, very narrow and not up to city standards by any means. The right of way is not measured from the center of the street like any of our other right of ways. And, you know, it's not in a subdivision. It's between two private properties. The right of way's been in place since 1914. And, you know, we're not talking about just, you know, a second drive cut, which I think is a very different thing, but it's encroachment agreement that includes, you know, major landscaping, which is major grading and totally transforming that entire right of way, which totally changes it, which I don't think is necessary for the second driveway. So I think they're actually two different items. And as far as whether it's appropriate for council, the last right of way encroachment agreement we had with Summer Walk, that was brought to council to approve, that only included landscaping, no grading. And then, you know, our code clearly says in Section 101.06.02, Responsibility for Interpretation, Section A, says in the interpretation of this UDC, the director shall be guided by the City of Canton Comprehensive Plan and applicable state or federal law. The director may also refer any issue to the city attorney or to the city council of Canton, city council for their determination. So I think it's totally appropriate for the council to be considering it according to our own code. So I know it's awkward and different for many reasons, but I just wanted to make those points, so.
Anyone else?
Mr. Patton, I noticed that on the report that you made, you have a space for recommendation, but there's no recommendation. If you have all the information, what is your recommendation?
I would approve. As they're going to have to satisfy any stormwater requirements relative to piping and/or ditches relative to the stormwater issues. I know that one of the utilities is underneath the asphalt paving of the roadway itself. Once work were to begin within the section in question, they'll have to have utility locates and things of that nature.
And the encroachment agreement would allow for any of that?
Correct.
And have you had any, on the encroachments that we have had in Summer Walk and the other driveways, have there been negative aspects that have happened with those?
I've not heard a complaint through our office.
I believe Mr. Goodwin made the comment about perhaps taking this back to staff. As it relates to the agreement for encroachment, I don't think the staff could authorize that because technically, agreements should be handled by the mayor and council. As it relates to the second driveway, I do think that's probably something the staff could handle administratively if the two items were split.
Do you have anything?
To add, a point of clarification, is encroachment agreement for the landscaping and not the second drive?
I think it contemplates approving both of them, but really, the encroachment agreement is for the landscaping. Because it, and just this idea of when does it come to council or not, that would be something, it'd be nice to have guidance on through an ordinance or something. But I think the staff and my conversation with the city manager were, you would want to agree and weigh in on anything that changes or puts substantial landscaping in, something more than sod. We don't want to make everybody come have to get an agreement just to put grass in. But if you're planting trees, in my mind, that's something we would want to have to give permission for in the right of way. So really, the encroachment agreement is about the landscaping, but it's wrapped up in one thing because it's approving the plan. It attaches the plan.
So it's landscaping included, substantial grading in the right of way.
Correct. And that would be another reason you'd want to do an agreement and have some standards to say, if you're going to do this kind of work, you have to come to council for that.
So in theory, we could, if council inclined or staff inclined, approve the second drive without approving the landscaping.
That would be an option, yes.
It seems to me like there's two separate issues, but.
But if you separate them as issues, then the staff could just do the driveway because we don't have any standards for driveways. So we really have no ability to say no to a driveway without any standards. So as long as it works, and I mean, you still have safety, you always have safety issues, but that's not going to apply on this street, so.
Mr. Yellen.
So if I'm understanding correctly, if we denied their request, that would not affect the driveway going in?
Well, I don't know. Since we brought it to council, I don't know what would happen on that. But yeah, that would be an issue that had to be sorted out.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion on the table? The motion was to deny the request, period. Anyone else? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
How many ayes we got? Raise your hand for a aye. Okay. Noes? Three to two, motion carries. Mr. Grant abstaining in the vote. Okay. Next item. Discussion of the proposed FY 2019 budget. Our chief financial officer, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, mayor and council. Council has heard this on numerous occasions. We are going to ask for some action on this at our August 16th, at the council's August 16th meeting in lieu of reiterating Mr. Pepper's presentation. I'll open the floor to any questions if y'all have any.
We've been through this a good bit so far, and we'll have one more. We had three public hearings thus far. Opportunity to discuss now. We will also have this for a vote on the budget on the 16th and another opportunity to discuss it. So no one has any questions and we'll move on. Thank you. Under new business, discussion on the award of the wastewater sludge handling and disposal contract.
In the past, sludge handling was handled under the trash contract. When we went out for trash services, this time around, we separated the sludge handling. We did a separate RFP. We got two bids. And after reviewing them, recommend that Waste Management continue services. They were considerably less expensive based on the estimated number of tons and trips and everything like that, so.
How does that compare with what we are paying now?
It's a little higher than what we're paying now, but not much. It's, in the grand scheme of things, I think it's still a pretty good rate compared to others.
Mr. Grant.
That was a question I was going to ask. You said it was part of the last contract. Was it an add-on fee that was paid by the city or was it part of the?
No, it was part of their services to do trash collection as well as sludge hauling. So when we did the-
That was included in the monthly rate?
So what happened under the last contract is we got a set price by the vendor for the sludge haul removal. We paid for that out of the sewer funds, not out of the sanitation fund. But it was based on that bid rate. When we moved forward with the, when we moved forward with the process for sanitation, we decided to pull this specific item out because it's such a specialty service and it's really a service that's between the city and the vendor, not really tied into our traditional sanitation. And so we pulled it out. Waste management currently serves that, but, you know, we wanted to make sure that we put out a proposal for the specific needs related to the plant as opposed to what are your rates for a haul? Because, you know, there's a little bit more detail that we were able to go into by putting it out as a separate bid. Number of hauls we need, times of day we need hauls, responsiveness of the vendor and things like that. Whereas the old package just had a set amount for a haul. Does that make sense?
Who else we got? Anyone else? Mr. Estes.
Philly, what is sludge?
According to all of the meetings I have had on water and wastewater, it is a cake, basically, that is leftover- Well, I don't know why they call it a cake. It's not a tasty cake, I would say, but it is the solids.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, discussion of Norton Lake Streets. Mr. Patton.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I did request that this item be placed on the agenda. The attorney for the Norton Lake Homeowners Association submitted a package of information to you all in regards to this item and requested to come before you and address the issue of the Norton Lake Streets. And I'll allow, if mayor and council let the attorney address you on this issue.
Okay. Questions on this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed council members. My name is Cynthia Hodge, and I serve as legal counsel for Norton Lake Homeowners Association. And our firm, Luter, Larkin &amp; Hunter, has been counseled since about March of this year. So just for the last few months since the spring. In a meeting with the Board of- In a meeting with the board of directors in, in early April, it had come to their attention that there was a concern about the acceptance or the dedication acceptance of the public roads. And I'll be specific as to three roads in question in the Norton Lake subdivision. That would be Cessna, Cesta Drive, Cole Court, and India Lane. There is another street that's Sheila Way that is private. It is not an issue here and is not actually part of the subdivision. To aid in my discussion, and I realize that this may not be something that can be addressed in one meeting or one session, but wanted to bring to the attention, it's my understanding this is the first time that this issue of the streets being accepted as public streets has been brought to the council's attention. So I guess my objective on behalf of my client is very simple. It's really just to bring awareness to and to create future action for city maintenance and acceptance, whether that be through implied or express acceptance of these roads. For your benefit, what I have done, and with the help of Ms. Stewart, have provided to you documents as opposed to a PowerPoint today. I want to make sure that I keep it as brief as possible. I realize that you have very important things to handle as well. But if I can walk you through these particular handouts, you'll be able to see the documents in greater detail and highlight it. One of actually is Mr. Patton's council agenda report that I was able to locate in previous agendas on your website, and it was dated June 25th, 2018. That's actually item number one. So it's actually Mr. Patton's report that he had provided. I was able to pull it online and provides the report in brief. And again, as it states here, it's a subdivision located within the city. It was annexed and zoned in 2002. Norton Lake Phase One final plat was recorded in 2005 and went through a foreclosure process. Unfortunately, the brief story is that there has been a number of developers and declarations that have gone through this process. It has changed hands to be able to be built out over time. The builder provided a performance bond to finish the portion of India Lane along the lots that he purchased and built, but there was a subsequent builder that purchased home construction on the remaining lots and did not provide any type of bond and would not provide a bond since the builder only purchased building lots. And again, we mentioned, as I mentioned before, Sheila Way is actually not one of the streets that we were referencing to be able to be brought forward to the city. It is actually a private street. Item number two in your handout is actually the Phase One Plats. What I've done is I've actually highlighted where the streets are located, and then I've actually, the following page, I've expanded it so you can see it much closer. And thirdly, I've also highlighted where the owner has offered dedication of these to be public streets. Item number three is actually the Phase Two Plats, which you'll be able to see again. Same highlighted, same process by which I have been able to show or highlight where there has been the owner's intent to dedicate these as public streets. Item number four is Norton Lake's declaration of covenants. And the main purpose, if you go turn to page eight of that document itself, to summarize, what I wanted to do is to show the association's responsibility, and as it is clear that this is not considered, or the streets are not considered part of the common property, and it's not actually part of the association's responsibility to maintain but for the street signs, as it puts out, that within the community to the extent that any signs are not maintained on an ongoing basis by the local government entity. Item number five is actually some photographs taken by one of the board members, just to show, most recently, I haven't been able to be out to the community since that time, but just to show some examples of how the streets do look and appear. And then, through an Open Records Act request that we submitted in May, we were able to obtain some emails and correspondence and attached reports regarding the public and private streets. And what I have done here for your benefit and to consolidate is, item six and seven are actually the street reports. One was updated August 20th, 2013, and item number seven that I have in mind is actually was updated November 25th, 2014. According to the documents that I was given through the Open Records request, that was the latest report that I could locate through the emails that were provided to me in the request, so was the November 25th, 2014. As it shows, and you can scan through this at your leisure, several pages in, you'll be able to see that Norton Lake is identified and it's highlighted in yellow. In the, in the emails, what it explained was that those that were highlighted in yellow were either private streets, or they were to be city maintained but had not been accepted yet. And as it appears in the table and graph, it shows that it had not been accepted with a question mark, and then there was a change between whether or not there was active bonds versus no bonds. And finally, as part of my presentation or documents for the council's review, was another document that I received in the Open Records request, which was the 2013 working copy of the surety bonds. Again, just more for reference of this purpose. I appreciate the time that you are giving me on behalf of my client to just bring this to your attention. A brief update that I was given by my client was that about three to four months ago, perhaps four months ago, there was a top coat that was finished on India Lane. The board members had gone out to ask or inquire as to who was handling this, and there was no answer that was given. We do know that that had been completed, however, Cessna and Cole still would need a top coat. At this juncture, what I'm, again, the objective or the purpose was really to create future action for city maintenance and an acceptance of these roads as public. There had, was an intent, and as you probably well know, there's two elements to dedication. There has to be an intent of the owner to dedicate, which I believe can be established in the plats and the recorded instruments, but there also has to be the acceptance of the dedication by the public authority. And at this time, I certainly welcome any sort of questions that you may have. I can give as much information as I have been able to locate over the course of the last several months and through the Open Records request, but we just ask for the councils and the cities' consideration in this matter to be able to accept, whether it be expressly through some more formalized action or implied, acceptance of these roads for future maintenance. Does the council have any questions for me?
Anyone have any questions? Ms. Wilson?
This is a lot to read, and it's probably in here, but is this subdivision completely built out?
The portion of Norton Lake, yes, it is. That is correct.
There is one lot at the end of India Lane that has not been built on, do not think it will ever be built on.
Oh, excuse me.
The builder that did finish, put the finished topping on the back portion of India Lane, actually pulled a permit on that lot and then abandoned it due to topography and being able to get water, sewer, that sort of thing. But for the most part, it is built out. And if I could add, Mr. Mayor, council members, and it's probably within the package, but the city staff did go through a process and try to call some of the original bonds without success relative to the streets.
What year was this subdivision, so, plat approved?
The first Phase One, I believe, was 2003, if I'm not mistaken. No, final plat was recorded '05. Property was annexed and zoned in 2002.
The, once that site plan was, was accepted, the site plan had included there the streets and so forth, which would be public and which would be private. Is that, is that accurate?
That is correct. The recorded plat reflected that Sheila Way is private and the others proposed to be city maintained streets.
So the city approved that site plan with it, very clearly stated that those were all to be public streets, and the city, basically, in my opinion, accepted them at that point as far as the future goes. Now, whether or not they were finished or when they would be finished is another thing. And really, you know, these things keep biting us here every, every few, well, too soon. And where bonds weren't secured, or they lapsed, or whatever, we don't have the bonds from back in history. And here we have, you know, basically a subdivision that we approved, we let people move in, get COs, and now, you know, it never was completely finished, the streets weren't completely finished. I mean, this is nothing new, but it comes up way too often, I got to tell you, way too often.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I've worked on this on behalf of council for, I guess, eight of the 10 years I've been with the city.
Mr. Grant?
Also, just want to confirm that Norton Lake wasn't included on the add-on assessment fee, and just want to ask why?
No, it was not included on the...
Why is that? Why was that?
Part of the reason why it wasn't added on, there, at the time, there weren't enough lots left in that neighborhood to really impact what would have been added on. And so, the one phase that had not been built, when the builder took those down, agreed to pave that section, and so, basically, you would have been requesting an add-on fee for those lots, but that section's already been top coated.
And when we have performance bonds, you said we tried unsuccessfully calling them in, do they, because they had lapsed, or because when the developer goes bankrupt, they're no longer valid? What?
In this instance, like I said, we did send letters to the surety company in regards to the bonds. Never really received much of a response. There were some throughout all of this over the years that were declared to be invalid, expired, because they weren't continued and things of that nature.
Mr. Dyer?
One of the, one of the issues that we have faced with these bonds was, they were maintenance bonds, which is what's called for in the ordinance. When we go and say, hey, come surety, top it, they say that's not maintenance. I don't know if that's the case here, but that's, we've had that response in other situations. So this was, this was just a bad practice that not just Canton did, but everybody did, of letting people develop without finishing the streets, but not getting a performance bond. We now get a performance bond when that happens.
We also allow the developer to finish the streets on the front end as well.
Or just, the rule is to finish them before you get your plat recorded. We started saying, you don't have to do that, but we didn't get the right kind of bonds in 2005.
First, that, Mr. Pepper, you got something? Oh, okay. Ms. McGrue?
Thank you. Mr. Patton, how many streets are not completed, top coated?
There's basically, if you will, the short entrance section, a section of India Lane, and then another street.
Two and a half, basically.
So two and a half.
And I believe that with the LARP bids and requests, there was an add-on line item within that in regards to Norton Lake.
When we bid out for Splot, for the paving that you approved with Barto, we gave a list of options because we have several of these neighborhoods where, you know, there's a question about who's going to finish out the streets and what have you. So we just had the bidders go in and provide us a cost if we had to go in and do it, just so we would know what cost we were looking at. So we do have one for Norton Lakes as part of that group.
Okay. Let's see, Ms. Wilson, you have anything? Okay. Looks like that's everybody then. Quite honestly, it looks to me like, you know, I think we've got an obligation. The question is when and if, not if, but perhaps when we do something. I mean, I don't, I think once you, my feeling's always been, once you record that deed, that's your right of way, whether or not, and that plat, it's your right of way, but, you know, you may not have accepted it for maintenance, but ultimately, you don't have a choice.
That's, that's the issue we've been battling for 10 years.
I know, it's the same issue.
As stated, it's, there's two steps. There's the dedication, which happens with the plat. We have to accept it, either by action, which I don't think we have any here, or formal acceptance. And there's plenty of streets out there that we haven't accepted yet because they haven't been topped. But, but they come along and they ask.
But without, without that performance bond, people that go away, you're just left empty-handed, you know, completely.
Yes, that's the council's decision, is whether to go ahead and accept it, because there are people living there.
The alternative then is to accept it or not to accept it.
What, what I would suggest is that...
Or do nothing, I mean, accept it or do nothing.
Accept it or do nothing are your options, right. Now, accepting it doesn't mean you have to go out and, and finish.
Well, I understand.
You just go ahead and answer the question that, yes, it's going to be accepted for city maintenance. Then they're like every other street, there are standards that you have to maintain, which is basically that it's passable.
See, that, basically, that would be where I think we'd have to be, is we might as well accept it, and then as we can do...
They get on the list, right.
Get it on the list, I mean, you know.
What I was going to suggest is that we can ask staff to come back with a formal report as to, you know, the current conditions of the roadway and what issues might exist so that you've got that prior to an acceptance, just so you know what you're getting.
Who else we got? Anyone else? Okay, then we will discuss this.
We will put this on the next council agenda. I'll get with development services and follow up. I did do a visual inspection, and the binder on the majority of the streets seemed to be in pretty good shape. I did notice a couple of minor cracks, but for the most part, the binder did appear to be in pretty good shape when I was out there about a month ago.
Okay, we will revisit this on our next agenda on the 16th and with the possibility of making a vote at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Discussion of streetlight proposal in Iris Park. Here's another one, right? Sort of similar.
Mr. Mayor, council members, nice to see you all again. Are you tired of seeing me?
No, no.
And it looks like I'm going to be on the agenda for dedicating our streets too at some point, but we're here right now to discuss and here to answer any questions you may have on the proposal for our streetlights. Hopefully, we can put this to bed.
Yeah, I, Mr. Pepper, you want to kind of summarize that for everyone here, if they're not, someone may not be familiar with it? We did, we were...
Did you ever get the quote back from Georgia Power?
Just to summarize, we, we've had several quotes, various numbers and various styles of lights, and then finally came up with the fact that the way the, the streets were platted, you have pictures to show where the transformers and the stubs are. That would, actually, I would think that when that was platted, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that that was approved for that type of an area fixture based on where those transformers and those stubs are. I may not be correct on that, but that's what it looks like. But in the interim, I've spoken to the representative from Georgia Power on various quotes, and because of where the stubs exist now and based on where I think, and it's just purely objective on my part going around the neighborhood and looking at where they are located, that we actually could get away with 22 and then one by us, Smith Douglas in their cul-de-sac that they are the developer. So, the problem with her giving me a reduced quote is, is that the fact that she needs first from you, a letter absolving them of any liability with a reduced number, so it's just everybody covering their butts, pardon my French. So, this is where we are right now. So I gave you the quote for 27, but ultimately, we would probably only need 22, 23 with Smith Douglas buying that one that they would need. And then we would try to, try to come up with some sort of a financial plan where the HOA would have a special streetlight district taxed, what that number would be, go back to Smith Douglas and say, okay, you have to buy a light, which you need to do anyway. Are you going to give us anything at all towards the rest of them? I'm not holding out too much hope for that, but maybe they will. And, and the, the sales lady from Georgia Power suggested that the city, if you were, if you would, take the quote because then we, you guys don't get taxed, it would reduce that price a little bit more because there would be no taxes on that.
Basically, the issue is, you know, from our standpoint, Georgia Power would have originally submitted a plan saying, you need 20 whatever lights out here, and built the infrastructure for that. So, my standpoint is, you know, if Georgia Power initially set it up for that, then they ought to be willing to say, you know, do it. They're saying, it's been so long, they're holding us to a new lighting standard. Yeah, I don't think we should hold the project to a new lighting standard when it was first built for an original standard. So if, if they could get away, I mean, what you quoted in here was $69,000. So, if, if they could get away, I mean, what you quoted in here was sixty-nine thousand dollars, basically, and I think that was for twenty-seven fixtures.
Correct.
You know, what that basically breaks down to is about five and, five seventy-five a month per lot for ten years to pay a streetlight to get them in.
We could probably even do better if we went with a few less lights, too.
And so, what we would do from that standpoint is, we would provide back to the HOA, under the streetlight portion of our code. We would provide back to an HOA, basically, a petition form that says, this is what the streetlight cost would be per lot in the neighborhood. They would be responsible to get the homeowners to sign that petition form, bring it back to us, and then we would add it to their utility bill. Moving forward, we would go ahead and put the lights in, and then refund ourselves from that assessment for however many years it, it's out there.
Do you need every homeowner to agree to that?
No, I think it was seventy-five percent.
Okay.
Is what the ordinance says. But that would be stipulated in the actual petition.
Okay. I think we could, I think we could swing that.
Now, does the, the quote for sixty-nine thousand approximately, does that include the, just the fixture itself, or is it the labor to install?
My, my understanding is that covers everything.
Okay, good. Okay.
The only thing we would cover would be the electric cost, which we cover on other streetlights throughout the city.
Yeah, we're looking for area fixtures. So, you're talking about a thirty-foot bronze. We're looking at a bronze pole with a, with a Cobra head, and that fixture at the end of it would be LED, so that would be much more economical, too, for the city.
This is, obviously, somewhat similar to the, the previous discussion that we just had.
Oh, yeah.
The, the question, the only, the only question I would have is, when a bond is posted, if one's posted, as it should be necessarily, does that, is that bond just for the asphalt, or is that bond for the sidewalks and the streetlights?
I think it's for everything that is required by the ordinance, because they're generally pretty, they are usually very general in that they are bonding the developers' required responsibilities.
I would have to look at the old bonds associated with Iris Park. Some of the bonds that were presented in years past, there was a bond for the paving, there was a bond for streetlights and sidewalks. Some bonds included everything within the right-of-way, and I'm not one hundred percent certain, Mr. Mayor, council members, in regards to Iris Park, if it was one bond to cover everything, or if there was a bond for roads, and a bond for sidewalks, and streetlights, things of that nature. I do know it's sort of been mixed and matched with bonds that I've looked at in the past.
But, but those would have been maintenance bonds.
Yes.
Not performance bonds, so it wouldn't matter.
Right. It, it wouldn't matter, but what would be the difference between this and just what we saw over there in Lake Norton Lake? I guess is my question.
None, just the difference between streetlights and paving, right.
And we got our streets that need to be paved, also.
The streetlights, just, there's always this question about who get, are they required to have streetlights and all those, those questions, because I'm not real sure about that. I'm not real clear on that in my mind. But, streetlights are a little bit different than paving, because they have different rules. But, because we don't, with streets, we say they have to build, be built to a certain standard and, and all that. I don't think that exists with streetlights. So, there could be a little bit different way of looking at it.
Okay.
And Billy, I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry, I just wanted to address, because we've spoken about the paving, too, and there's escrow money, and how did that come about?
So, so in Iris Park, that was one of the neighborhoods where there were a substantial number of lots that were unbuilt on, and the former city manager started the add-on fee program. We have about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of add-on fees in the Iris Park community. We had those streets additionally placed as an option in the last bid that we did for paving, and the paving cost came back at about two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand. So, we have a little less than half in add-on fees. Now, all of the lots, basically, out there have been taken down, so there's not going to be a whole, a substantial amount of add-on fees added to it. But that's another one of those situations where, when the city does accept those streets for maintenance, it'll go into the cycle, and when those roads come up to pave, we would put the add-on fees in for a portion, and then have to make up the remaining portion out of Sploesd.
Okay. Mr. Grant?
Just going to ask on the, you said we would absorb the cost of the lights, and then bill it back to them over time?
Correct.
So, if that's the case, we would do that, so we would get the lights without the tax, so that would be some cost savings. Did your, did your estimate include tax for the sixty-nine thousand?
That one, I do believe, included the tax.
So, it could be a little less then.
Correct.
Yeah, the streetlight ordinance basically says, we, we put them in at the request of the neighborhood, then we bill the neighborhood for that cost over a set period of time. And we would just decide if that's five years or ten years, and that'll change the monthly amount, or how we bill for it.
Okay.
And then, another thing, I, I know we're going to talk about this at the next meeting, or, but on the, on the streets, I know we had, you know, priority for city-owned streets and a maintenance schedule for that. It seems like with all these other streets, that we don't have bonds, that we're looking at possibly accepting in the future, should we look at having a study on all of those streets and see which ones, after they're accepted, need to be addressed first, and...
Well, we, we can always, we can always update that list based on when those streets are accepted. If that makes sense.
Yeah. And maybe there's a priority for acceptance, based on conditions or something like that, and, and maybe how much fees we've collected or something.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else?
Are we, are we, just, is this issue just the twenty-two streetlights, and the city putting them in and charging an assessment to the homeowners to pay for about five hundred and seventy, I mean, five dollars, seventy-five dollars, five dollars and seventy-five cents per month, per home, for about ten years?
That's correct.
I make a motion to approve. Oh, we're not...
But what we, what we will do is, we'll come back at the next meeting. We'll verify the number with Georgia Power. We'll look at the sales tax and make sure, you know, that's okay. We'll figure out exactly what letter they're warning from the city as it relates to liability waiver for them.
And, and the number of lights, too.
Right. And we'll provide that as a whole package. Pardon?
Twenty-two sounds kind of like a lot of lights for that subdivision.
Well, I, Mr. Ingram and I did a ride around, and, you know, at, for instance, at Diamond Ridge, there's basically a streetlight for every fourth home. So, if you figure there's a hundred lots, then twenty, twenty-five probably is within the range, you know. But a lot of it depends on the light, the style of light, you know, how high it is, what have you.
I know. Anyone else? Okay. Maybe we'll get you an answer one way or the other at our sixteenth meeting, okay?
Right.
We're not tired of seeing you, though.
Well, I'm not tired of seeing you either.
Thank you very much, Rick. Appreciate it. Okay, so that'll be on our agenda for possible vote on the sixteenth, okay? All right, the next item, discussion of Meritage Home Request for City Council Consideration to Hear An Appeal Of The Board Of Zoning Appeals Decision To Deny The Variance Case V. eighteen oh five dash zero zero six, Side Yard Setback At Three Twenty Four Woodridge Pass. Is my understanding that that house had been removed?
Uh, they did tear down the framing, but Meritage Homes has requested this be carried forward another month. They are in negotiations to purchase an adjacent lot that possibly could rectify the need to come before City Council in regards to the appeal of the denial of the setback.
So, their request is to table this till September?
Yes, sir. I received an email from their attorney late this afternoon, requesting if City Council would consider tabling this for another month.
Okay, that, that is a request to table it for another month. If, if the council wants to table it, deny it, approve it, whatever, they can do that. What, what is your pleasure?
Move to table for a second.
We have a motion to table it. Have a second. Mr. Yellen made the motion. Mr. Goodman seconded that motion. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Okay, all members voting to table that item. Okay. Item E and F were removed at the request of the applicant. Item G. Discussion of Planning Commission Recommendation Case MP. eighteen oh six day zero zero two for Sun Spring Land Investors, Requesting To Admon The Master Plan From Commercial To Residential, two-point-nine-three acres For Town Homes. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council members, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing in regards to this master plan amendment on April sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Planning Commission did recommend approval for the master plan amendment to change this two-point-nine-three acres from commercial to residential for this proposed town home project.
Now, this is River Green.
No, sir. This is Riverstone.
Riverstone, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. Okay.
Yes, this is the, like I said, two-point-nine-three acres up there by the movie theaters.
Yeah, okay. Any questions or discussion regarding that? Mr. Grant?
Were there, oh, this is zoning, I guess, are the, is there another following this? There were conditions on that? Was it not the zoning on the, or it was on the...
We'll address that one. We'll get the conditional use permit, the next item on the agenda.
Okay. That's, that's, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, I was just thinking. Any, anything else on that? And the next item is is the conditional use.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
The same issue.
Mr. Mayor, council members, again, a public hearing was held in regards to conditional use permit approval for the proposed town homes on this two-point-nine-three acre site. Canton Planning Commission did recommend approval of CUP with a condition that there be a fifty-foot buffer adjacent to the commercial and residential. Staff would note that in the Unified Development Code, the single-family residential neighborhood that is adjacent to this proposed property is on RA six, and in our code, the, the buffer requirements between town homes and this other RA six zoning district is twenty-five feet.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Is the, is the condition for it to be fifty feet?
That was the Planning Commission recommendation, yes, ma'am.
But you're saying that, that the development code only requires it to be twenty-five?
That is correct.
And that's, that's, that wouldn't, okay, I got it, I got it.
Ms. McGrue?
If the single-family buffer only has to be twenty-five feet, and then the townhomes has to be fifty, that would be seventy-five feet of buffer between the two developments. Am I correct?
No, ma'am. The buffer is between the different zoning districts, and if City Council is inclined to go along with the Planning Commission recommendation, there would be a fifty-foot buffer between the existing residential and this proposed town home development.
Why did the commission suggest a fifty-foot buffer for this project?
I'm not real certain as to why the Planning Commission recommended fifty feet instead of the twenty-five-foot allowance of, that the code specified. Motion was made rather quickly.
Ms., Mr.?
Because it's still residential, and one residential has a twenty-five-foot buffer. I don't understand.
I believe that the mention of it was that there was a fifty, there's a fifty-foot buffer between residential and commercial. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
And that since there was going to be a fifty-foot buffer already on two sides, that they would make it fifty-foot on the third side. And back to your point about the fifty and the twenty-five, the residential, that single-family on the other side is much older residential, so it wouldn't have had the same buffers back then. You know, so you wouldn't have that fifty feet, twenty-five and twenty-five. But in this case, they wanted to put all fifty on the new development side. Does that make sense?
A little.
The, the existing residential is older. Some of those homes were built in the nineteen twenties. Some of the old mill housing area, there's been some redevelopment in that area. Staff would also point out that the commercial, which is adjacent to this proposed two acres, is within the same planned development zoning district, master plan for all of Riverstone. And I'm not certain that the fifty-foot buffer between commercial and residential would come into play relative to a larger master plan development.
Mr. Yellen?
Has the developer expressed any reservation about being able to meet that recommendation? Is there any...
They've not expressed that to me. I can check with the zoning administrator to see if they have any concerns. The developer is here in the office. Do you have concerns with a fifty-foot buffer?
Good afternoon. My name's Dave Odom. I am the developer. Fifty-foot would be extremely difficult to meet. We were expecting to do a twenty-five-foot planted buffer anyway, as part of our original plan, which I think, as Mr. Patton has pointed out, would be what the code would require. And we have met with Ms. Wilson and Ms. McGrue, and talked about the buffer. So, we, we'd be happy with twenty-five feet. Fifty would be very difficult.
Okay. Excuse me. Mr. Yellen, you through? Okay. Ms. Wilson?
I went up to look at this, where the buffer would go, and sometimes you have to use your common sense. The, the, the homes that are there now do not come all the way up to the end of that dead-end street. And so, it seems like a twenty-five-foot buffer is plenty, because of the setback for the homes that are already in there. If you look at it, you just sort of have to use your common sense. I don't see a reason for, the rationale, I don't understand the rationale that the Planning Commission put on for a fifty-foot buffer.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
I'm going to regress a minute, and I apologize. You, I brought this up about the Woodridge, and it looked like there wasn't anything to discuss at that point. But if you want to, if you want to make any comments from the, from there regarding that, we'll go ahead and do it.
I appreciate it. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I skipped over after we got to that, and I thought, well, there's nothing there, as it was...
Yeah, when they asked to table, it kind of goes fast.
Yeah.
They're buying, they're trying to buy the lot that they're, that they're saying is affected. But with the, the, the foundation is crooked. They had many times of inspections that they should have caught that that house is put on there crooked. It directly affects my home. The back of that home has the, the extension of the basement that is clearly crossed the line, but you don't consider that, because it's not the building. So, the, the way the extension of the basement comes off is, is within a foot of my property line. Also, when you walk off of my deck, the way that house was, because I saw it as framed up. When you walk off my deck, because of the way it's angled now toward my house, you look directly into the master bedroom. If it was set on the property right, you would not be able to do that, because it would be squared. But right now, it's turned like this, so when I come off my deck, I'm going to have to close my eyes. I, I don't feel that they should be able to leave that foundation there, because they're going to walk away five, ten years from now, and I need to sell my house, I'm going to be affected. You know, so, same with this cross-street neighbors, because the house is literally sitting like this toward my house. Just because they bought this lot over here, which is where everybody's worried about this one-point-eight-feet variance, it really affects my house and the way the whole neighborhood sits. The only reason they're not here today, because they're both on vacation. So, I'm kind of speaking for the three of us right now. So, I'm kind of speaking for the three of us right now, that they look at the house and I'm next to the house. So, them buying that lot pacifies, I guess, some rules, but it still directly affects me and the resale value and the neighborhood contruency, you know? I don't even know if that's right, but you know what I'm saying.
This is not, this is, we're not going to call this public input, it's going to be the other discussion on the agenda item, so, Ms. McGrew, did you have a question?
He answered my question.
Oh, he did? Okay.
Facing the home, you live on the left side, correct?
I don't, I don't face the home, I'm directly, when you're looking at the home, I'm directly, I'm the neighbor.
Well, on, on the left side?
When you're looking at the home, I'm on the right.
You're on the right.
They're purchasing the, they're trying to purchase the left property. Right now, the left side is owned by another developer.
Would you state your name, please?
Lorne, L-O-R-N-E, Brown. I live at 322 Woodridge Pass.
Anyone else?
It's going to come back up in September.
Yeah, yeah.
You're still going to discuss on the 16th?
Yeah, we will have.
Because they table it for a month.
Yeah, you, you're welcome to come back in September because we will have, it'll be on a work session again, and the first Thursday, and then, any vote that we take will be at the next meeting.
Now, now, you'll be voting just whether to take the appeal or not. If you take it, it goes on to a public hearing. So, if you don't take it, it stands with the denial, so.
Well, cha, chances are, if, if indeed the, the council at the, let's see, the next, next meeting, we'll be voting on whether to accept the appeal, right?
You could, yes. You could decide then to take the appeal or not. If you didn't take it, then it stands with the denial. If you did take it, then there'd be another public hearing.
Okay, now, the, they moved this to September, is that what they wanted to do?
They asked to put it off for a month because I think they were going to...
So, I, I don't, I don't think it would...
I, I think that's what's happening, is if they buy the lot, the issue may become moot. Because they'd satisfy the setback problem.
Okay, so, actually, we shouldn't think about doing anything even at the next meeting?
Just wait till then and see where you are.
Wait till that, so, okay, all right. And then, and I guess potentially, it would be theoretically be the second meeting before we had even vote as to whether or not to hear the appeal?
To hear it, right. It may become moot, though, I mean, they may withdraw the variance application, is what.
So, we've got a while yet. Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question or comment on that? All right, now, we'll get back on track, maybe, for a little while, anyway. Discussion of proposed contract with Jeff Dobson and Associates.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You have before you a proposed contract from Jeff Dobson and Associates. Usually in the springtime, April, we have an annual auction surplus of assets. This contract dictates that Jeff Dobson and Associates would handle those assets for the city in auction. Everything in this contract is, for the most part, boilerplate, same as it was in the prior contract that the city executed. In review, I would like to draw your attention toward the top that this is an exclusive right to sale. I would appreciate some comments as to whether the council, if we could potentially strike that, or y'all would want to strike that. I think there are some instances, some instances where the city would like to auction assets in other times of the year, or use other vehicles, for example, like gov deals. I know we have used those in the past, and we've had good response out of that, so I would like council to consider requesting to strike the, the words exclusive right to sale.
Tell me that again.
So, the way the contract reads, it looks like, if we approve it, it's written that any asset that council wishes to surplus, Mr. Dobson would have the authority to auction. What we're saying is, we are fine with Mr. Dobson's company doing the annual auction that the city puts surplus items in, but if the city were to have a specialty item, for instance, that we wanted to surplus and wanted to put out to a broader audience, you know, like through gov deals, for instance, or even property, if the city wanted to surplus property, we might want to go a different track than using Mr. Dobson in the auction.
So, is this agreement saying, are you saying it pretty much says it's exclusive right?
Yes, it does.
And, and in the past, Mr. Dobson has said that what he means is that he's, he wants the exclusive right to be the auctioneer, and that, or, or that the city can choose not to use him at all, but he just doesn't want you to go hire another auctioneer. So, perhaps we just need to change it to say exclusive right to auction, but I don't think he's ever intended that you couldn't sell property otherwise.
Well, this is in conjunction, is this not in conjunction with the county and...
It is.
He gets a separate agreement with everybody.
And, and in full disclosure, I might add, that I spoke with Mr. Dobson, and Mr. Dobson did mention that he has auctions throughout the year, not just the one in the spring. So, he said, we are more than happy, and he'd actually encourage us to auction at other times throughout the year as well. So, that, I think he can facilitate not just in April, but throughout the year. But, for example, we auctioned an asset off approximately four or five years, I, forgive me, I don't know the exact date, of an asphalt ripper, that, that ground-up asphalt. We felt that that asset was better, you know, displayed to a larger audience, and I think we did get a higher price for that than at the original April auction.
Okay, so, we will still have a list of auction items, right?
Yes.
For him to sell?
So, you, you have to approve a list of surplus items over...
$1,000.
$1,000. So, you know, if we have a chair, for instance, we can always dispose of that, but if we have a vehicle, it should go through the auction process. We bring you a list of items to auction, he approves it. If, and I think what we're trying to say is, as part of your routine auction business, we're fine to partner with you, but if the city has something special that we don't feel like fits that auction, we want to be able to go our own route.
So, so, so are you saying that we need to change the agreement?
Well, Mr. Dyer, if you don't mind clarifying that, you feel the, the wording of this indicates that we can?
No, I, I think we need to clarify it.
Okay.
I, I, what we probably just need to do is make it clear that the city can sell on its own.
Right.
Because I think that's what Mr. Dobson intends. He may not want you to go sell on gov.com because it's another auction, but that's what...
From my understanding, with my discussion with Mr. Dobson, he wants the right to auction all assets.
So, I think that's why Mr. Ingram is bringing it to you, and if, if that's important to you, meaning you want to be able to sell through other auction sites, because you have to have some kind of public auction, but those qualify, you wouldn't want to change the contract, so.
Ms. Yellen, you have something?
I was just wondering if it wouldn't be more appropriate to just say surplus property as specified by council, rather than just blanket surplus property, so that we can specify what he auctions? Right, which is, that would be the way I had always understood it. Now, I, I will have to say, I think Mr. Dobson has been doing this a long time, and my memory of when he said that was probably before there were these internet sites, and he wasn't too worried about you being able to do it some other way. So, he may have gotten worried about that.
Ms. Wilson?
So, the, the, what, Mr. Ingram, I think, was asking us if we didn't want to exclude the word exclusive.
I think he's just asking, do you agree with him that we need to make it clear that we can do, do other things, and if you all agree, it looks like you do.
Right, so, so if we, if we don't, if we exclude the word exclusive, it's fine, right?
Well, I think we just need to be clear while we're talking about it. We'll figure some language.
We'll bring you back a contract that provides that, basically, for his auctions, he's our exclusive auctioneer, for the items we tell him he can exclusively sell.
Right, so if we take out that word...
Not so much exclusive, because he does want an exclusive for something.
Exclusive, if that's what you say?
I, I think we'll come, we'll bring you some language. We know what you want, and we know what the staff wants. We'll, we will, rather than try to figure out a motion, we'll just bring you a new contract with new language that accomplishes this.
Sounds good. Okay. Mr. Peppers, you have something else?
Nothing exclusive.
All right. Sounds good. The next item is contract review occupational tax.
Thank you, you have before you an exclusive contract to deal with occupational tax structure review. Now, joking aside, the council asked management about it almost a year ago to go out and seek some proposals to do outside occupational audit. We had some difficulty. I contacted GMA, Carl Vincent Institute, I had a lot of difficulty in finding someone that did this. This is somewhat unique from what I've been told. I finally found a professional, Jack Consulting Incorporated. I learned of them first because they did a lot of work with the city of Dunwoody on getting them their feet off the ground when they were a new city, with setting up their ordinances for occupational tax, among other things. They finally re, or upon me reaching out to them, they decided that they would help us. Admittedly, they said that this is somewhat new grounds for them as well, so I want to emphasize that, that this is, I think, a learning curve for all of us. A couple of things that we want to accomplish is, first of all, our occupational tax is currently structured with the standard industrial classification, which is an outdated classification for businesses. So, that's the first thing we're going to tackle, is do what's called a crosswalk and convert all of those SIC codes to NAICS codes. Secondly, beyond that, they're going to look at the way that we tax businesses. We currently use a combination of a small flat fee upfront plus gross receipts. We take a portion, depending on where you fall in those SIC codes, we take a portion of your gross revenue, and that's how we calculate the tax. So, they're going to review it, should the city entertain changing that methodology, what would be the results if we do that, so they're going to do a complete analysis and bring back any suggestions that they may have.
Any, any questions there? Ms. Estes?
So, I, I got to imagine that this is not new for many municipalities, so I assume they probably just do benchmarking of a bunch of different municipalities, and that should be the extent of it, since it sounds like it's fairly new to them.
It's very rare for a community, a municipality to change its method, methodology. The state requires you to use one of four methodologies. So, you know, there's not a lot of room just to do whatever you want. You have to use gross receipts, a percentage of gross receipts, flat fees, number of employees, and profitability ratios. You've got to use one of those, so that, I would imagine that it's very rare for municipalities to change their methodology, hence the reason it's, you know, somewhat difficult to...
And then, if, this work is really just to help confer, to change and convert to, from SIC to AIC, right?
Primarily, yes, sir. That's, that's the first and primary...
So, if ultimately, we went to just number of employees, this becomes kind of null and void, right, anyways?
Under the second option, they may say, y'all have a very, y'all've got a satisfactory way of, a methodology to, to impose the occupational tax, and they have no suggestions to change, if that answer your question. So, yeah, the second phase that they, that they list out may be very abbreviated.
So, should Phase Two become Phase One, and Phase One become Two, potentially?
No, I don't believe so, because if you look at the NAICS, it is far more broad. The old SIC, the standard industrial classification, is very generic, you know, it clumps a lot of businesses into one. The NAICS is very broad, so I think when we do that, we're going to have to address our tables anyway, because you're going to have multiple businesses that used to be taxed at this one rate, now we've got to tax them differently.
What if, what if the scenario was, we just decide to do it on employees regardless of the industry, the number of employees, like I've seen some other municipalities do, then we wouldn't really care. That's why I'm wondering if, if we went through and said, hey, let's just figure out benchmark, what gives us our bang for the buck without creating too much administrative work? Because I, I'd hate to come back to the scenario and say, we just spent 14, $15,000 to get a lookup table to convert from SIC to NAICS, when we're just going to go with employees counts anyways and do a standard, or am I not thinking about it?
No, I, I mean, I, I think that's important to look at. A lot of communities have pushed away from employee counts because, one, they're generally underreported, two, you're converting, you know, there's, there's a benefit for you to have more part-time employees and less full-time employees because of the way the counts go, which is not necessarily a good thing for the community. At least what we have now, which is a look at your income tax, your, your, your sales, we have a little bit of idea as to what type of business you're actually carrying out from a financial standpoint, where we may not get that same information on an employee count. So, if we go the employee count route, smaller businesses with full-time employees are likely to be hit more than a larger business with part-time employees. Does that make sense?
Okay, yep.
That is generally a comment that I've heard from various individuals as well, that we're having a lot of, a lot of entities are, at number of employees, they're actually looking to do this and move to gross receipts or profitability ratios.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, I, we've, we've talked about this for a while, I'm glad to see that we're, we're doing this. I think it's critical because I think even with the SIC codes now, I mean, it's my understanding that, I, I know they're outdated, but I thought there was some regulation that you had to move away from them by a certain period of time, am I correct?
We're already well past that date.
So, so we really don't have a choice, we needed to move to a different system anyway, so, so I'm in, certainly in favor of this, and, and, you know, I think the cost for returning because of those reasons, we, you know, we need to move forward with it, so, it, you know, I think, we've discussed before, too, there's all kind of issues with the SIC codes, even, even for the small employers, I think there's reasons that the larger employers, there's, there's different ways they can report their income, if they're, you know, national, international companies, there are different ways that they report now, that, you know, a small business could be paying a lot more for occupational tax than, you know, a very large business down in Brown Industrial Park, which happens often, I think.
A number of cities have moved away from the employee count because of the growth in 1099 contractors as well. That, that has a direct impact on how you would, you know, report your employees for your license.
I don't understand it all, but I, I know we need to do something, so I, I think certainly it's worth, worth the expenditure to, to try to figure out what our next move should be, so, I know it's difficult, too, I know it's complicated.
It is.
I don't think I would want to do, to use employees only, because that would discourage employment, looks to me like. I mean, your costs go up, if, if you're doing that, the more employees you got, the more you pay. The system that we have now was, as I understand, was predicated on the fact that, based on revenues, and we do have methods by which we can verify those revenues, I assume.
That's correct, yes.
And it's, it's based on the type of business and that level or margin of profitability of each one. Some of them have, a grocery store, for instance, doesn't have much of a profit margin at all, but they've got a big volume, so they don't make as much profit, I guess, per se, as, as some other businesses.
And yet, they may have the same number of employees of an industry down the road that has a huge profitable, profitability ratio.
But I, I'm, I'm glad to see, looking at that, I think, I think, you know, we need to do something that is, is reasonable, that is fair to everyone.
Yeah, and, and once again, I think most entities use a combination of, you know, they'll use a flat fee upfront to, to tax a certain level, $100, $150, and then they use number of employees, profitability ratio, or gross receipts. So, I'm sure it will probably, there's, looking ahead, their, their recommendation's probably going to entail some type of combination.
Yeah, you and I, you and I had this discussion earlier, but back in the dark ages, when, when I was involved with the county, and we implemented the first business license tax in, in the county, and it was, we, we had the Department of Community Affairs come up and work with us to, to get that done, but we wanted to do a flat rate, and that's what we ended up doing initially. The Department of Community Affairs was encouraging us and said, eventually, you're going to have to go to this system that we're at now, where there's a mar, a margin of profitability and all that. And I think ultimately, the, the county did go, did go to that, but the flat rate was simple, it, it allowed us to take a step in that direction and get it done. We knew what businesses we had, and, and they were, they were helping the county out a little bit, so it was a step in the right direction, but obviously, we've advanced further than this point now, so I'm glad to see us looking at that. Did you have something to, okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Next item. Item K is the right-of-way deed. Mr. Peppers, you want to...
I'll, I'll handle that.
Okay.
I'll handle that. This is, we discussed this in executive session. This is in settlement of one of the reservoir condemnation cases. This deed is to give back to the property owner some stream crossings so that we weren't impacting a loss of value in the property. So the motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign the quitclaim deed to finalize the settlement in the Ligon family condemnation case.
Okay, we have the motion. Mr. Grant made the motion. I believe Mr. Goodman seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. Mr. Peppers?
I have two items. The first item is relative to what Mr. Weaver was speaking to earlier. And Mr. Dyer and I have talked about this as it relates to the noise ordinance and fireworks. The law that was approved basically provides that if that's the route we want to go, we have to provide a period of time for advertisement that that's the route that we want to go in a proposed ordinance. And so I think what Mr. Dyer and I had talked about was that we would prepare an ordinance for that, put it on the agenda cycle for September so that we could get the notice run, provide public notification. Then you'd have the opportunity to decide if that's something that you wanted to do, which would be restricting fireworks based upon our nuisance ordinance as it relates to noise.
Specifically, when they first passed the fireworks bill allowing consumer fireworks, we had to add in an exception to the noise ordinance that fireworks were not a violation. We would just be taking that exception out. But we have to reenact the noise ordinance as a whole. That's what the law required us to do. We're allowed to regulate fireworks by noise, but only if we re-adopt a noise ordinance. The thought was that you may want to look at your noise ordinance and if there was going to be some, any other changes that we needed to do, that's why we were pushing it out to September.
Sure. So for instance, there's one paragraph in the noise ordinance that talks about loud music. And the way it's written, it gives, you know, basically a proposal to the police department that says, you know, if it's unreasonable, you know, you could have them turn it down. If it's during a certain amount of time, they can be cited for it. I would suggest we split it up so that it's clear that you have leeway on either of those options, not just the timing option. So what we would do is we would sit down with the noise ordinance, make some tweaks on our end, bring it back to you for you to adopt, make sure the public notification is out there. If you decide to adopt it, then you can deal with the fireworks issue and any other changes you want to make in the noise ordinance at that time.
How do you define and/or quantify noise?
Well, our ordinance is just if it's unreasonably loud. We have a very vague, non-objective ordinance. There are other ways to do it. There's decimal levels. There's if you can hear a certain number of feet away. There's some more objective ways than we have. I asked the chief whether we had any real issues in that and apparently we don't. We either have a very quiet city or it all just works out. But what you would end up with is if we really were trying to enforce it against somebody, we would have some issues because it's just, it's so subjective. So that's what my first thought was. There's also an exception in our ordinance for, it doesn't apply to things that are seventeen hundred feet from a platted subdivision, which means there's some downtown areas, I believe, that wouldn't, aren't really subject to the noise ordinance. I suspect that was about allowing more noise downtown. And so that, to me, needs to be addressed in a different way. And especially if fireworks are going to be included, we might want to look at some hours. That during these hours, it's acceptable to have this much noise and get a little more specific with it.
Okay. Mr. Estes?
Is there anything that we could do to be somewhat creative in notifying the public? I know that we can do the basics, but what I'd hate to see happen is that this turns into kind of the aftermath of the smoking ordinance. And we make a, we make a change, we try to communicate, but, you know, I just, I know with Angela, there may be some things we can do on Facebook or whatever.
Also specifically what the law says is we have to give notice in the paper, which is not a requirement for every change you make in the ordinance.
Right. And we have to put it on our website for seventy-two hours.
Correct. And so we would, we would be able to do that. You know, we probably get more complaints from people during the season of fireworks than we do, you know, attaboys, you know, kind of deal. So, you know, I think you'll want to hear from both sides. And so it's important to give that notice.
The change for fireworks is easy. That's just taking the exception out. That's easy. It's the other stuff that I thought we probably ought to take a look at.
Is, I mean, is there any way that we can require someone to keep the fireworks on their own property when they shoot them? I mean, you've got Roman candles, you've got bottle rockets and they come on the roof of the house. You know, we got houses now so dense that you can reach out one window and touch a house and you know when they shoot the bottle rockets off. I know I've had them on my roof.
I think that's an issue for our legislators because they have basically said fireworks are legal and the only thing we can regulate is noise.
I guess I have to get some Roman candles then and shoot them back.
Well, that's a real concern for downtown, I think, if you're going to allow.
Mr. Goodman?
Does the state rule not dominate us on that?
Well, it specifically allows us to regulate noise. We can include the noise from fireworks in our noise ordinance. We cannot specifically ban firework noise. It has to be treated the same as any other noise.
So they restricted local government from restricting fireworks. Got so many complaints that now they've allowed the local government to provide some restrictions as long as it's noise-related.
Correct. The same as turning your stereo up.
We can't say just because you have a property of a certain size, you can't shoot fireworks. We can say you can't shoot them during these times based on noise.
But we still have holidays and that.
We're required by state law to still allow certain things during holidays.
The way the statute is written, our noise ordinance can control the daily use of fireworks. There's a whole separate section about the holidays. It's a little ambiguous, but I think the intent was they're going to be able to shoot fireworks regardless of the noise ordinance on those holidays.
I agree. Ms. Wilson, you have anything? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, carry on.
All right. The second item I have for you is a draft. And I believe Ms. Stewart has those and has passed them out. It is a draft of the capital projects list that y'all have been asking for. I say it's a draft because there are still some question marks. There's a lot of items in red. You know, we don't, we don't have exact prices on everything. We've provided a list of possible funding sources for each of these, you know, whether it's SPOLOST, whether it's going to be impact fees, and we've tried to break them down by what fits. This is a working draft and so I would just encourage you to look at it and provide some feedback to us. And, you know, at some point, we're going to need on these SPOLOST projects to come up with a priority list of what you want to tackle first and second. And that will have some impact on, you know, what dollars are spent where and how they're spent from a timing standpoint.
Mr. Estes?
Yeah, to follow up on that, I might request to see if we could try to find some time this month to maybe sit down and just kind of get us all together and kind of review. And, you know, we've had a lot of good independent meetings, like for example, we had the Jones Building independently from some of the other dialogue we've had on the River Trails or Parks and Rec. So it'd be great to just now see it all together, understand the funding sources, and then, you know, just really kind of get a good sense that we could get the staff, you know, really executing on some of these.
So council had asked about setting up a special work session to talk about those UDC revisions. Perhaps we could do a special work session and tie both subjects in together and try to get that scheduled this month. If that's okay with everybody.
This doesn't include any of the water and sewer stuff?
No, no. We did not put water and sewer in here. I mean, it's got them listed on the backside. But those, of course, would come out of the utility funds, not out of the SPOLOST or what have you. But again, we just received that capital impact plan tonight on the water. So, you know, again, some of these numbers may change.
Okay, good. Take a look at these.
That's all I have.
Okay. We have council introduced topics, entertainment district. Mr. Estes?
Give me a second. I want to hand out. So, thank you. I wanted to get this in front of the council. You know, I guess what I'd start off by saying is, you know, this is something that I've heard a lot of feedback about. And personally, I've spent a bit of time just trying to benchmark what other cities are doing, have done, working through the process. And so what I've handed out is just an overview of what I hope would be a foundational, you know, starting point for us to just start some dialogue here. So in overview, I'd say, you know, the proposal here would be to create an entertainment district that could be adopted by the council through an ordinance. The proposal would be almost twofold. One, we'd set up, the proposal would be aligned to our map, which would be the historic downtown Canton map that's already been approved in our ordinance six dash two eleven, number four. The entertainment district, again, based on that boundary, would allow the removal of alcoholic drinks from establishments that currently hold consumption on-premise licenses. Drinks would need to be served, that would be taken from an establishment that can serve on-premise. It'd be in a plastic cup, no larger than sixteen ounces, and patrons would only be able to carry a drink, one drink per person at a time. With this entertainment district, we'd recognize that it would be unlawful to carry an open container onto property designated as a church, daycare center, and school. We'd also ensure that private property and business owners could restrict a patron from entering their private property or business with an open container. Of course, it would be still unlawful to carry an open container from, in a vehicle and remove it from a vehicle or put it into a vehicle. And then we'd also restrict anyone from being able to take an open container from a residential unit. And again, it would be because we'd only allow it to come from a facility in the downtown district that currently has a consumption license. It would, I think, the model, as we'll get into some of the details here, would follow a similar approach to the logistics that we're currently utilizing for First Fridays and also the Art and Wine Walk. We'd put, we'd want to make sure, or what I've used and kind of modeled here, and again, up to debate and certainly review with Mr. Dyer. But, you know, really, I think we've seen a lot of cities that have done this, executed it well, and have put a lot of thought into this. Examples, Woodstock, Acworth, and Dalton and Roswell are a few that I've kind of taken into consideration here. The, I think it'd be important to highlight that the entertainment district would really try to help expand and tie our future development with the Canton Mill area and our existing downtown area. Because the proposal is for the current historic downtown map, that's already in scope. But I think as that development continues to progress along, it'll just be advantageous for us to get ahead of that and be able to make sure that there's opportunities for people to, you know, just really tie in our current downtown area with the Mill area. And then, you know, finally, this really ties back to kind of what we heard from residents and related to the Canton Ford Initiative. I think this is just another step and opportunity to just kind of link what we have to offer today with shopping and restaurant opportunities and given, an opportunity to just integrate that together. I've noted there's twelve cities that are fairly close to us, many very, very close to us, but throughout Georgia here, middle and north Georgia, that have already passed these revisions, including Acworth, Alpharetta, Carrollton, Roswell, Woodstock, Duluth, Milton, Suwannee, Peachtree Corners, Smyrna, Savannah, and even Dalton. That was actually, they've had that for quite a while. And as, you know, I just make a comment, as I've talked to businesses, one of the things that I think gets them very excited about this opportunity would be that, you know, allowing them to compete with our surrounding municipalities that already have this offering. So as a proposal, you know, I covered the entertainment district would be to focus on our existing map of the historic downtown business district. The rationale I've highlighted, but, you know, I just really want to kind of reiterate that, you know, as we continue to support and strive to support our current businesses and we want to attract new businesses and patrons, the intent of this ordinance is to really provide a safe opportunity for us to allow those patrons and residents to shop, eat, drink within our historic downtown district. We've got, you know, as we, I've highlighted twelve examples, but many other cities have shown that they've implemented this and the experience of patrons and residents has increased that shopping experience in the entertainment district. You know, really, you see folks that will go wait for a table and now will use this as a destination point for what I would say, for Canton, for shopping and night out and enjoying it with families and friends. I want to make sure that it's clear that this would not, the intent here would not be to propose to turn Canton into a party town, but really focus on our businesses and provide opportunities for our businesses to increase commerce and also give our residents and patrons more opportunities for time to be able to lever this to shop our shops and enjoy our restaurants. And I really think that we can structure this in a way that the ordinance can provide the safety and security. You know, at the end of the day, it's still legal to be drunk publicly and it's still legal to get in a car drunk and drive. So, you know, certainly this would not circumvent that. I provided the historic Canton, Canton historic map here. And, you know, really, again, it's been defined in our ordinances, so it would be no changes there, but allow the entertainment district just to model this. So as we change this district, it would, the entertainment district boundaries would also change in conjunction with this. Under the section, under model ordinances, so I did, you know, again, I've spent some time researching other cities and municipalities. Woodstock is one that's recently done this and I think they've put a lot of thought into this. A few of these ordinances that I would propose to work with Mr. Dyer on to help strengthen the language or provide language that would support our needs would be, first one, adding an ordinance on the open, providing a provision for open containers. It would allow for open containers to be provided in the entertainment district. And it would require that only businesses that currently have a license to sell alcoholic beverages for consumption on premises be able to participate in this and providing patrons the ability to walk around with a beverage. This does not allow all of a sudden to have bars or anyone, you know, limit the food requirements that I know we've talked about in the past. So this would just be those places today. A lot of our restaurants that currently have consumption on premise. Second one would be defining what type of outside consumption alcoholic beverages are permitted. So putting context around the container, that it must be, the container must be plastic. It must be not exceed sixteen ounces. Can't have more than, more than one drink on your person at a time. It would also focus on, you know, just making sure that, again, that there's a clear plastic glass. And second piece that kind of ties into that is you can't be drinking from cans or bottles or glass. So trying to limit the... drinking from cans or bottles or glass, so trying to limit the, the, the trash from, from broken glasses and other stuff. It also, uh, would allow us to make sure that we're not able to, you know, people aren't just grabbing cans or bottles from their home and now all of a sudden walking around the street, so it's gotta come from, um, from a, from a restaurant or, or licensee that provides consumption on premise. The next would, as I was saying, as point C here, would be that we'd focus on, uh, only allowing, um, those, those restaurants or, or licensees who allow for, um, for, for serving alcohol for consumption on premises, those would all have to reside in the entertainment district in order to participate here. Um, and then, uh, one that I, I really liked, uh, from, from Woodstock is, so even though our ordinance today says that you can, um, consume alcohol and restaurants can serve until 2:00 PM, uh, Woodstock limited it to any time after midnight, they, uh, we would discontinue, and I think that's kind of, that's thoughtful, that you're not racing to two o'clock with people walking around on the street, that it stops at two, and people can start to find their ways to, to places that they need to be. Next section would be, um, incorporating a new ordinance specifically related to this on signage. So, um, having an eight by, an eleven by eight inch sign posted at the, um, within public view, uh, right at the exit of the establishment, that, that would effectively highlight that if you're leaving this establishment, you take responsibility, um, as you consume, you, you must be in a clear plastic cup, so establishing all those, all those rules, and those that do not follow that, um, would be subject to citation or fine. And then also, we'd reiterate by providing a map, so it'd be clear, so folks would know where they can and can't participate in this entertainment district. And last would be, um, just incorporating a, um, an ordinance to just, you know, kinda a catch-all that just says, even though we're passing this, um, this is not deemed to change any state laws or local ordinance pertaining to public drunkenness, disorderly conduct, driving with an open container, or, uh, driving under the influence of alcohol. The next few sections here, I, I won't go into detail, but, um, I, again, look to Mr. Dyer's feedback here, but with this change, we would have to amend, I've called out three, um, ordinances here that, that specifically are our Canton ordinances that would need to be amended, because they'd now be in conflict with, with, um, the ordinances that I proposed on the prior pages, you know, one related to drinking in public, patio sales and outdoor sales, and then potentially some language to the special event permit. You know, I guess it, you know, again, just to, before we open it up for discussion, I, I think, again, as I started this, is that, you know, the, you know, I think one of the benefits of, of our role is that we get to listen to what our residents are asking for. Um, you know, this is something that, this is a topic that really isn't new, that hasn't popped up in just the last week or months, but, you know, this is certainly something that, that I've heard feedback for over a year. I formally took, um, an interest in this and, and really kinda went, going slow to, to really make sure that we're, we're being thoughtful, that there's, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of nuances that can go on here, but, you know, I think that since joining council, I've gotten a lot of thoughts and feedback from, from residents on, on what they're looking for, um, and, and I think, you know, it'd be great to, to, you know, continue and incorporate the, the feedback from our residents, which to date has been, for the majority from, from feedback I've heard, uh, very positive, so. So with that, I'd love to take any, any questions or create any dialogue.
Okay. Anyone have any comments or questions? Apparently covered it pretty well. Anyone? I guess, Mr. Grant.
Well, I appreciate the time and thoughts you put into this, I think it's very well thought out, and, um, a couple of thoughts I had, it just, um, I know that recently, if you come down to downtown Canton, especially on weekends, Friday or Saturday night, there are people everywhere, and most of our restaurants will now tell you that it's not uncommon for them to have an hour and a half, hour forty-five, sometimes a two-hour wait, uh, and so we do have people walking between restaurants waiting for their reservations, and so this would give them something, I guess, to do over there doing that, so, and, and I wonder, I mean, I have heard people complaining that they wished our retail shops would stay open later, so I wonder if that would help encourage that. Um, uh, uh, you know, I know that we have for, I guess, gosh, five or six years, maybe longer than that, have had our special event ordinances where you could carry open, like, within the retained boundaries, and I don't recall of any issues or problems we've had with that. I think most people respected that really well, so, um, and I think people have enjoyed that, so. I do think that's all, I know that the Mill developers have mentioned the, the, um, idea of, of the entertainment district down at the new Mill property, and, um, I think certainly that would be something that could and should be considered down there, but I think, you know, if we do consider it down there, if we are gonna consider that going forward, that certainly our downtown merchants deserve the same consideration, and, and I think, Nick mentioned maybe getting out in front of that, but, uh, I'd be, if, to tie those two together as our downtown footprint continues to expand, um, this district may help do that, so just a couple of thoughts randomly, so.
Ms. McGee?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Estes, thank you for this in-depth study, and this is something I'm asked about periodically, so I'm, I'm glad to have something to take forward and discuss, and I, I think it will enhance business and draw people in.
Anyone else? Uh, I would just, I would just say that if it enhances business, if it is good for business, and it's good for the citizens, why would you just restrict it to downtown? Why not let anywhere in the city do the same thing? If it's good for business, I don't think we ought to be possessive and say, okay, just this little area here can do that. I don't understand, if it's good for business, why would we restrict it? That's just me. Anyone else? Do you have some? Go ahead.
I just, I, I think kind of an opinion there would be that I think with the structure of what we have, just kinda with, with the boundary here, it's, it's somewhat contained. Um, you know, I think it's certainly something, it's a starting point, you know, as we've approached some of our alcohol ordinances, um, and, and reviewed a lot of those, you know, I think we've, we've kinda taken the approach that will establish something and continue to build on as the, um, as the times change or, or feedback comes, so I think, you know, certainly it's, if it's good for business, I think this would be a starting point, there's a lot of, a lot of momentum, you know, we mentioned the Mill, but, you know, certainly I think we could always look at other, other opportunities, keeping a keen eye on making sure that, I think, safety and security are, are the, are the focus.
Ms. McGee?
Thank you. I was thinking about what you just said about opening it up to the entire town, and I think a good rationale for that is, our downtown is a destination, it's charming, we're about to have the Mill open up, also a destination, a charming destination, a place to go, spend time with friends and family, and I was thinking about occasionally going to O'Charley's or Red Lobster, and somehow I just don't see wandering back and forth from, uh, Bell's to O'Charley's to Ross to Publix with a beverage. Uh, there's no charm, there's no draw, there's no magnetism, um, to spend time there, you know, you go to Red Lobster, you get your shrimp, and you go home. Or you go to downtown Canton where it's, uh, active and charming, and there's, uh, a nightlife. Someone, uh, that my grandson knows, uh, moved away from Canton and came back through visiting family, and he said, oh my God, Canton has nightlife now, I'm gonna stop. Just a thought.
But do you not think O'Charley's ought to have at least the option? I mean, uh, if it's good for business, and, I don't know, if, can you take a drink outside of O'Charley's now and walk around while you? What?
They do not. They do not have a patio.
Right, so if you have to wait an hour at O'Charley's, then you can't take a drink outside, right?
That's correct. You can't, you can't take a drink outside of premises.
But if this was expanded out to them, you could, maybe. I'm, I'm just throwing that out there for the sake of argument here, just to kinda look at both sides of this, and whether or not others might feel a little bit, uh, betrayed if, if we did something for one area and didn't do it for the other.
We should invite them to communicate with us.
We need to move them downtown.
We need to invite them to communicate with us and tell them what they think, and tell us what they think, and what they'd like to see happen. But we need to invite them to have input.
Sure. Ms. Grant?
I'm all for making things fair for, for businesses and, and, and improving their businesses. Um, that being said, though, I do think we do have other things, you know, we have the, um, Historic Preservation District downtown and, and other things, and one of the key tenants of the master plan, the LCI, uh, improvement plan was, you know, walkability and encouraging walkability downtown, so I, I do see how this, you know, kinda fits in that character area versus, you know, areas like Riverstone, um, but, but, I mean, I do respect and appreciate your point of making it fair to, fair to businesses everywhere, so.
Thank you. Who else? Ms. McGee? Are you, oh, Ms. Stewart, yeah, okay. Do you have something?
I understand your question, Mayor, but if, and if making it fair for business was the only reason for having an, an entertainment, um, district, that would be, be very fair, but that's not the only reason for having, having an entertainment district. An entertainment district is more confined, there's more walking around, and that's the reason for having a, a, a proposed entertainment district, not a proposed entertainment all over the city.
I understand.
Just a, just a certain district.
I wasn't promoting that, by the way, I just wanted to make sure, you know, I was just questioning, if it's good for business, why not?
Right, if it, were just for business only, I think that's a good point, but it's, it's for other things, it's, it's proposing having an entertainment district, which is more of a walk-around area, in my mind.
Totally a fun area.
Right, 'cause remember when we had the Art and Wine Walk? I mean, we're all, we had our little cups, and we're walking all around, and, so that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Anyone else? Okay. Uh, let's see, where are we here now? Storage lockers, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, I kinda, I wanted to, I want to ask you all to consider, as we move to the new building for City Hall, I believe, Mr. Peppers, that we have funding for, uh, for building possibly some storage lockers in the budget?
We, we have a line item in general administration, and we have a line item in buildings for small equipment.
Right.
And that's what this would follow.
Right, so it's been brought to our attention several times by Mr. Weaver, that we have a, some storage lockers for weapons. I would expand that to have, as you come into City Hall, to have storage lockers for personal items. If I come in with my backpack and I don't wanna walk all the way around, there would be a storage place that, as I walked in, I could place that, so I would just like for us to consider, before we move, that have some storage lockers in the new building for weapons and for other personal items.
Okay. Anyone else? Anybody have any comments on that?
I think so.
Okay. Anyone else?
Is there any? Is there anything that we would need to do formally, or is it, 'cause it's not a big capital purchase, is it?
One, what we would have to do is we would have to develop some type of policy on our staff side as it relates to how you handle those lockers, um, and we can bring that back to you at a future meeting.
So someone would, would be, the city would be responsible, I assume, for whatever's in those lockers or put in there, whether they be weapons or somebody's pocketbook, right? Okay.
Disclose, no liability.
Well, it, it could be set up, you know, similar to, you know, a locker that you have at a, at a hotel where it's got the key in it, you know, and you put whatever you want to, and you take the key with you, you know, and then you have to go back and do that, or, you know, um, there are some jurisdictions where, you know, you provide the weapon to an officer and they store it away from you, there's some liability issues in there. We would, we would look at best practices and bring that back to you as a recommendation.
Okay. Ms. Grant?
Yes, I'd certainly be interested in hearing the best practices, and I, I know Chief Mitchell's just addressed this issue before, but I'd also maybe at that time like to hear from him again. Uh, at one point, I know it was mentioned or discussed, uh, if I'm correct, that the possibility that of black court, I don't think that's the official term of it, possibly being in the new building.
Environmental.
Environmental court.
Environmental court, yeah.
But because of code enforcement being there, am I remembering that correctly, or?
Code enforcement staying in this building. Now, the one, the one caveat I would say, as it relates to the whole deal, is as we transition out of this building into the new City Hall, you know, whether or not we have to make any changes in this building that would require us to temporarily move court to that building, you know, um, we just need to be considerate of that, you know. The question would be if the goal is council wants to do that permanently as a permanent solution, we may not be able to address it as soon as we move into the new building, depending on what happens with the transition in this building, you know, uh, but we can, we can try to bring those timelines and best practices back to you.
Anyone else? Okay, um, the only item that I have is that, uh, to announce, uh, I will recommend the reappointment of the International Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals, uh, which I honestly don't believe has ever met yet, but their term is up, and so, uh, I'm gonna recommend that, and, uh, we will, uh, consider that at the next meeting. Uh, if you have someone else that, uh, that you would like to see on there, you know, feel free, I, two, two of the individuals there are, are people who know something about building or, or developing and stuff like that, for sure, uh, but if you have somebody else that you, you know, recommend, let me know, and we'll look, uh, uh, so, anyway. That's all that I have, and in fact, fortunately, we don't have an executive session tonight, so, uh, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Goodwin made the motion, Mr. Grant seconded that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you. Lordy, lordy, what a deal.